Coming up next on ECN, a regularly scheduled meeting of your Edinburgh City Council. On the council, Mayor Ramiro Garza Jr., Mayor Pro Tem Jason De Leon, Councilmember Daniel Dan Diaz, Councilmember David Salazar Jr., and Councilmember Jerry Lozano. Sitting in as advisors, City Manager Myra Ayala, and City Attorney Josie Ramirez Solis. And now, live from Edinburgh City Hall, the Edinburgh City Council.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order of our Edinburgh City Council meeting for November 5th. It's 6 o'clock. And I do see visibly that we do have a quorum. We're gonna start our meeting as we do every meeting with a prayer. And tonight, we have Rabbi Asher Heck from Chabad RGV. If you're here, if you could please approach the podium, please rise for a prayer.
Friends, let us unite together in prayer. Almighty God, we have assembled here today for the purpose of communal service on behalf of the residents of our beautiful city. Bless our work here today. Bless the work of their honorable mayor, city counselors, city managers, city officials, and all their staff, along with all our fellow citizens. Bless us that our efforts bear good fruit, that our thoughtful, honest, and respectful dialogue lead to constructive results. Please guide our hand as we make important decisions for our community. In our civic service, we fulfill the mandate that you have bestowed upon us, instructed to Noah in his day, and conveyed through Moses at Mount Sinai, known as the seven universal ethics. To worship you and you alone, two, never to curse your holy name, three, not to commit murder, four, not to commit adultery or any sexual misdeeds, five, not to steal, lie, or cheat, six, not to be cruel to any living creature, and seven, that every society be governed by just laws based on the recognition and acknowledgement of you, oh God, as the sovereign ruler of all humankind and all nations. As this assembly is doing right now, by opening this meeting with a prayer as the foundation of the work for this great city. All to make your garden our world, which you have given us to inhabit, a safe, moral, and constructive place, a beautiful place, one filled with goodness and kindness that expresses the beauty of the divine intent. Almighty God, in the merit of our sincere efforts, bless us all with good health, success in all of our endeavors, and positive results from our work. Bless our wonderful city and communities so that it continues to prosper and grow to be a model city within our great state and our beloved country. Almighty God, bless us with clarity, bless us with strength, and bless us with peace. Now let us say amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to item two.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The meeting was posted according to Texas Open Meetings Act on October 30th, 2025, at 5:45 PM, sir.
Thank you. Item three is disclosure of conflict of interest.
Yes, Mayor. Under a state law, local government official is required to disclose a substantial interest for themselves or certain family members and abstain from voting on matters related to such a conflict. Are there any conflicts to disclose related to matters on any items on today's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Yes, for me, there will be one. Public hearing, item E.
Okay.
I'll abstain on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item four, City Manager's Report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Today I did have a couple of events that I wanted to invite the public to attend. However, the Sound of Freedom, an evening with the US Air Force, unfortunately due to the government shutdown of the scheduled US Air Force band concert, which is the Sound of Freedom, scheduled for November the 7th, has been postponed until further notice. Another one we do, I mean, another event that we have is Veterans Day Parade. So I would like to remind the community that this Saturday morning, we will be honoring our veterans and current service personnel during Edinburgh's annual Veterans Day Parade. The parade will start promptly at 9:30 AM from Florida Stadium, traveling north along Clausner Boulevard to Coon Street. We encourage everyone participating to arrive early. All the floats must be in place and participants onboard by 9 AM to ensure they're eligible for the float judging and trophy awards. This event is one of our most heartfelt celebrations showcasing Edinburgh's pride as a Purple Heart city and hometown of heroes. We look forward to seeing our community come together to honor and celebrate our veterans and troops who bravely serve our community. We also have the Stars and Stripes, Stars, Stripes and Sounds, November 8th, from 7 to 11 PM. That same evening, the city of Edinburgh will host the annual Stars, Stripes, and Sounds concert, a free community event celebrating veterans and active-duty service members through music. The concert will take place from, like I mentioned, from 7 to 11 PM at the Promenade Park Amphitheater. Everyone is invited to join us for an evening of live performances under the stars. This is a free event. This year's lineup features Nashville recording artist Sammy Ariaga, along with Quelo McCain and local favorite Giraffe, delivering a mix of Spanish country and rock. Join us as Edinburgh proudly celebrates our veterans with events that bring the community together in gratitude to our veterans and the active service personnel. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item five, Proclamations. The first one is presentation recognizing the 2025-2026 Mayor's Youth Advisory Council members.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brandon Allenese with the City Manager's Office and the new chair for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, otherwise known as Mayak. Mayak is one of my favorite parts of our 2040 initiative. It was created with the intention of giving our younger generation a voice and ear in local government. It invites new and bright minds to participate, learn, and engage, helping them develop leadership skills, confidence, and a better understanding of how the city operates. This next generation is our future movers and shakers, and based on their passion and hunger to serve their community, I'd say we got a bright future. Mayak has had three previous cohorts, all chaired by the incredible Sabrina Walker Hernandez, who we tragically lost, as we all know, this past summer. Sabrina carried this mantle with passion. Her loss continues to be felt across our community. It's both an honor and a privilege to carry this program forward. Applications for this cohort, just to tell you all a little bit about the process, were sent to superintendents and principals across Edinburgh inviting high school juniors to apply. They had to submit a 500-word essay sharing their vision for Edinburgh 20 years from now. From there, applicants were put through an interview process, spoke about themselves and their vision, and what unique perspectives they will bring. We received over 30 applications across the city of Edinburgh from lots of great students, and standing before you are the ones that were selected. While today marks the official induction of the newest cohort, the fun begins in December, where they'll have a leadership-building session that will help, based on their interests, shape the curriculum that they will follow for the next months to follow. Standing before you, the newest members of Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, I'll now read their names for the record. As I call your name, please step forward, give a little smile, wave to the council and your folks, so you can be recognized, and then I'll turn it over to our mayor and council for some remarks. Brittany Cortazar Vella, Evelyn De Leon Vella, Juliana Garza Vella, Jesús Elián González Economies, Aileen Guajardo Vella, Adesini Hernández Economies, Luis Hernández Edinburgh North, Valeria Lozano Economies, Sofia Luna Edinburgh North, Ethan Marchmont Edinburgh Vella, Shaili Maricio Vanguard Beethoven, Aubrey Ozuna Vella, Miranda Pequeño Edinburgh North, Angel Rodriguez Vella, Michelle Salazar Vella, Aranza Sanchez Edinburgh North, Jessica Thomas STISD World Scholars, Anai Vega Economies, and Ryan Zuniga Edinburgh Vella. Mayor, council, members of the community, I present the 2025-2026 Mayor's Youth Advisory Cohort.
I just wanna say congratulations to all of you. You're in for, I think, a great initiative here that you're gonna spend for the next about four years. I'm kidding. It's just this school year, but you're gonna get to learn a lot about what's happening here in our city, how our city functions. And so, we really appreciate you all signing up and learning more about our city. But more important than that is, we look forward to hearing your ideas. Since the first cohort that came onboard, I think, three years ago, you know, I know y'all aren't shy about ideas. You're here to let us know, what do y'all wanna see happen in our city? Well, how can we improve on what we do from y'all's standpoint? And so, congratulations to all of you, congratulations to your parents, and we look forward to seeing y'all be participants in this year's advisory council. Congratulations. Sure.
Do you wanna come down?
We'll make two rows. Y'all can follow towards the front, so if you need to go, stay in the back.
I should go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wow.
Five, four, three.
I'm gonna see if I can have y'all come to.
Spirit, we just kind of. One, get it back, Mayor.
All right, we're gonna move on to item B. We have a proclamation recognizing November 3rd through 7th as Municipal Courts Week, Courts Week, and I see Judge Bustos here and his staff for this proclamation. Judge, if you wanna come to the podium, and we'll go down there to provide you the proclamation while the proclamation is read.
I will now read the proclamation for the record. Municipal Courts Week, November 30th through 7th, 2025. Whereas the Edinburgh Municipal Court has existed since August 24th, 1926, and serves as the local justice center for the enforcement of local ordinances and fine only state offenses that protect the peace and dignity of our community. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. Whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than any other Texas courts combined, the public's impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon their experience in the municipal court. Whereas the procedures for the Edinburgh Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. Whereas the Edinburgh Municipal Judge and Clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars, and workshops. Whereas the city of Edinburgh is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern the judges and us. The court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of judiciary justice. Whereas the Edinburgh City Council recognizes the accomplishments of the Texas Municipal Courts as to their critical role in preserving public safety, protecting the quality of life in Texas, communities, and criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Edinburgh Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore, the Mayor and Council of the city of Edinburgh, Texas, by the power vested in them by law, do hereby proclaim November 30th through 7th, 2025, as Municipal Courts Week, and encourage everyone to recognize and extend their appreciation to the Edinburgh Municipal Court Judge and support personnel for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our city.
May please the court.
Please. No, thank you, Judge.
Mayor, Councilman, thank you for having us on this beautiful evening. City Manager Ms. Maya Ayala, thank you for having us here. You know, I was listening to what the rabbi said, man. He got me really fired up. Got me fired up about foundation and following a leader. And ladies and gentlemen, I've been very fortunate to be part of a lot of winning teams, from grade school to junior high to high school. Actually, one of my coaches here, Coach Javi Garza, says here, he taught me what it was to be a winner and to lead a pack. More importantly, he taught me about foundation. And then, ladies and gentlemen, to the back of me, which I apologize to my staff, I look at all my staff members here, from Samantha Rubin, Mr. Hadas Sessi, Rosio, Grace, Ms. Maribel, Owen, Ms. Rosio too, and Ms. Ruby, they're the foundation. They're what's made my job look so easy, ladies and gentlemen. I write their coattails every single day, and I'm a blessed man to come to work and to work with such valuable people and salt-of-the-earth type of people, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, making a mistake, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them. They make everything in the city 100%. They give everything they can in their endeavor. And I owe forever gratitude to them because of what they do for me. More importantly, what they do for our city. Because at the end of the day, this belongs to the city of this court. But ladies and gentlemen, Edinburgh should be very proud to have such wonderful, valuable assets that we have. Can everyone help me with a round of applause for them? And I will say one thing. I promised, I promised, Maribel, that I'd be short. I'm so very proud of them. You know, it's not every day you get to walk with giants. And I'm just very proud of them from the bottom of my heart. To all my staff members, thank you for everything you do, and I wish we had the Municipal Courts Week every week so I can just tell people how great of employees you guys are. So, thank you.
And Judge, I just wanna say on behalf of myself, and I think I can speak for the council and Ms. Maribel, I just wanna say thank you for all y'all do in the court. You know, I know I'm leaving office, but I'm gonna leave with a counsel that we do need a bigger municipal court. So, I'm gonna use that to plug that in, but I know you guys do a lot of work, what you have, and we really appreciate it. You know, we're a city of 109,000 people with a county seat. There's a lot that happens here in our cities, y'all know. And so, thank you for all that y'all do, and each day and every day for our city.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Council members, thank you for all your help, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations on Municipal Courts Week.
Ms. Maribel, let's say a couple.
Yes, please.
Maribel Velazquez, Court Administrator for the Municipal Court. I'd just like to extend, you know, thank you to my staff. It is hard being public servants. I mean, I've been doing it for many years, and I know what it's like, and I just wanna say thank you for everything that they do. It doesn't go unseen or anything like that. We had an event this morning. We had people show up and learn about what we do, and it was really, really nice to see that. We had interns from World Scholars, you know, there also, so they're also engaging with our department. So, that is really, really good to see. Thank you so much for all your help. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all again. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to item C. We have another proclamation recognizing November 15th, 2025, as Arbor Day.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Arbor Day, November 15th, 2025. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sturdy Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day in spring be set aside for the planting of trees. In Texas, that special day is the first Friday in November, a better time due to cooler temperatures of the fall. Whereas this holiday called Texas Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, is now observed locally, nationally, and throughout the world. Whereas trees promote human health and well-being, add beauty to communities, improve water quality and quantity, reduce erosion of precious topsoil, and provide shade, clean air, and habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees improve the quality of life for the present and future health, safety, and welfare of all citizens by reducing the economic burden of energy costs, improving interconnectedness to our planet, and renewal of air quality aligning with the pillars of sustainable development. Whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our home, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. They also increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Whereas the city of Edinburgh is continuing to demonstrate its commitment to trees by conducting ongoing tree planting projects along city rightways, median parks, and other city properties, along with training and development. Whereas the Arbor Day tree planting ceremony is a outward expression of the commitment that the city of Edinburgh has towards maintaining healthier urban forestry by investing in tree planting to increase shading, promote community engagement with our planet, and ensure excellence through continual growth and resiliency. And whereas wherever trees are planted, it becomes a source of joy and spiritual renewal. In keeping with the tradition of Texas Arbor Day, the city of Edinburgh, in collaboration with Region 1 and the Texas ANM Forest Service, will celebrate Texas Arbor Day on November 15th, 2025, by offering 300 trees to the community for adoption and engaging students, city staff, and citizens with the planting of 10 trees around Promenade Park Amphitheater. Now therefore, the Mayor and Council of the city of Edinburgh, Texas, by the power vested in them by law, do hereby proclaim November 15th, 2025, as Arbor Day, and encourage all residents to celebrate Arbor Day by planting and caring for trees and supporting efforts to protect our trees, reflecting the city of Edinburgh's commitment to forestry and building partnerships to promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanna thank you, the Mayor, Council, and City Management, for allowing us to bring back the city forester position back in 2023. It was a position that was done away with, but this council allowed us to bring it back. And Leo has been a key part of the Edinburgh Development Team for the past three years. And Leo Duran is also just one of three ISA-certified arborists in the Rio Grande Valley. The other one's in Brownsville, so it's just Leo and the gentleman in Brownsville. Today, I got a phone call, just before this meeting around 4 PM, I got a phone call from a local pastor from the Palm Valley Church, one of the newer churches here on South McCall. And he was calling me because he wanted assistance with his trees. He said, "Hi, man, do you still have that forester?" And I said, "Yes, we do." He said, "Well, I need some help. Some of my trees ain't doing too good." So I said, "I'll send them to you tomorrow." And it's that bridge with the members of the community that we're so privileged to have here in this wonderful city of Edinburgh. I wanted to take also some time to invite the members of our community to be part of that tree giveaway that was just mentioned by Clarice. On November 15th, we're gonna be giving away 300 trees, and these aren't small trees. These are pretty good-sized trees. And we're also gonna be planting 10 trees at the promenade. Again, thanks, Mayor and Council, for your continued support.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna move on to item six, Public Comments.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Edinburgh City Council asks for a specific portion of the city council meeting to be dedicated to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes. I'll be taking time. Please note, the public comment period is not interactive. The council may not respond to public comments. At this time, Mayor and Council, there are three public comments. The first public comment is Ms. Fern McClarity regarding taxpayers' money.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, gentlemen, the voters have settled most of our questions concerning who will lead our community. But I would suggest that greater importance is the support for the propositions that reduce taxes. I truly believe that people voted based on who they believe would reduce their taxes and help them. If there was a proposition directing this council to reduce taxes, it would be overwhelmingly supported. But the members of this council has voted to take more money from the people by increasing the water rates by 67%, shifting money from solid waste to golf courses, and then having to sell bonds to pay for needed equipment repairs. In my opinion, the significant actions taken was to go into executive session to decide to pay $39 million for a property valued by the appraisal district around $19 million. So why didn't the University of Texas system buy the property directly from the developer? Because they would not have paid $39 million for property values at $19 million if they did buy it. This city gave DHR $10 million based on the employment of 300 new full-time employees. I have submitted a request for public comment for information for the purpose of finding out if DHR fulfilled the commitment. I have not received a response. Soon, the process of selling bonds to build a county high-rise parking, I know, has started because everyone knows it can't be built for $6 million. The city will also sell more bonds for the solid waste department because it has shifted more money to golf courses. The finance of the city project is not rocket science. Reduce the tax rate, allow small businesses to create more jobs, is the way to increase tax revenue. And infrastructure is not the limiting factor to community growth. It is the lack of water. And finally, increasing fees for public service is the same as increasing taxes. They both have a negative impact on growth, especially if there is a high concentration of poverty. The public does not support increasing the cost of water as the means of generating revenue. They do not support increased taxes to support golf courses. They support better use of existing resources like the sales tax. And like the 17 propositions, look at them because the people need help with their property taxes. I congratulate those who have won and challenge them to return to return to the work of improving the lives of the people that live here in Edinburgh. It is your jobs to do that. You wanted these positions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. McClarity also has questions on items 8A, 8B, and 10B. The next public comment is Ms. Diane Teeter regarding elections and minorities.
Good evening, Diane Teeter. I'd like to share some observations about our city, our state, and our country. Tonight, I look around this room and see women and minorities doing the business of our city. Yet I also see that every seat on the dais is occupied by men. In our last election, no women appeared on the ballot. This is not just coincidence. It reflects a deeper pattern. We are a city of minorities, and women are part of the minority. But even here, men continue to dominate leadership while women are relegated to administrative roles. I am proud to be a product of affirmative action, Title IX, D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion in public higher education. These programs opened doors for me and many others. But today, these very protections are being dismantled by federal rulings, state laws, and by political agendas that seek to erase our history and silence our voices. We are fortunate to have university and college systems in our region. They serve thousands of students, many of them first generation, low income, and from community like ours. But even in higher education, we are seeing troubling signs. The quiet removal or underfunding of courses in women's studies, gender studies, Chicano studies, and even the arts, including flamenco dance. These are not fringe electives. They are reflections of our lived experience. Their disappearance reflects a broader push to align education with politically sanctioned narratives. And this erasure is not limited to classrooms. Sergeant Freddie Gonzalez, a Medal of Honor recipient and hometown hero of Edinburgh, had his profile removed from a U.S. Navy heritage website in twenty twenty-four, part of a federal rollback of diversity-related content. A hometown hero of ours digitally erased. We live in uncertain and dangerous times, especially for communities composed of women and minorities. We must recognize that under the guise of Christian nationalism, our country is being reshaped. Freedoms that generations fought for, freedoms that allowed me and others to thrive are being dismantled before our very eyes. I urge this council to reflect on what kind of city we want to be. Representation matters. Curriculum matters. History matters, and silence, too, is a choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last public comment is Ms. Mariala, City Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just would like to advise the public that this is Mayor Ramiro Garza's last regularly scheduled city council meeting. And I also want to take this opportunity, Mayor, to thank you on behalf of all of the city employees for your many contributions as a public servant, for your continued support, and all the strides that we made, and the accolades, and the achievements that we were able to accomplish under your leadership. So I really want to thank you on behalf of myself, the city management team, and all the city staff and the employees in this community. So thank you very much, Mayor Ramiro Garza Jr. You will not be forgotten, and I know that there's still a lot more of you to come as far as being a public servant. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to item seven, public hearings. We have items A through E. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing. If there's anybody here wanting to speak on any of these items, A, B, C, D, or E, you're welcome to do so at this time. And feel free to come up to the podium at this time. It's not this time. It's another item. It's item nine.
Good evening, City Council Member, Mayor. I'm gonna bring up topic seven, A, on the proposed rezoning of a residential to a multifamily. I do have some renderings that I would like for you guys to consider before taking action on this item. If you can present it. My name is Efren Gomez. I'm sorry. Efren Gomez, representing Gomez Three Construction and my client owner of the property. So it is currently a vacant corner lot property on the corner of Lovett and Sixteenth Street. We are proposing a three-unit housing residence. And we are wanting to contribute to the high demand of affordable housing available to the local citizens. We're also wanting to contribute to the continued success of the City of Edinburgh and their growth. And we would also like to consider, we would not be providing a property tax base. It's currently just a vacant lot. I mean, if you drive by there, there's, you know, sometimes people hanging out and just doing stuff that they probably shouldn't be doing. And if we provide some housing there, I think we can accomplish something very productive there.
Thank you for your comments. So just to be clear, you're looking to do, rezone it, to do what exactly? Multifamilies?
Multifamily. It's currently a single-family zoning ordinance.
And everything around here is single-family, correct?
Within, I think within that immediate area, but there are some surrounding areas within like a two-block radius that currently already has multifamily, so, you know, we are requesting your consideration of that.
You're gonna have enough parking spaces?
Yes, three units. We can fit at least six. This is just a proposed site plan. We do have to go back and probably make some adjustments to it. But that's just a general idea of what we're trying to do there.
They're gonna be one bedrooms, two bedrooms?
One and two-bedroom units, yeah.
And they're gonna be for like students mainly, or is it looking to serve?
It'll serve the community. I think it's strategically located to provide housing for not only the surrounding community, but, you know, the growing university, so I think it'd be a great opportunity to look at that.
It's a, I see the design. It's a beautiful design. Are you, have you gotten any feedback from the surrounding areas? And I know there's other multifamily units around there, but have you gotten any feedback from any of the residents that are against it?
Not necessarily. I know we had a, we had an open discussion, I believe it was last month. I don't think anybody showed up negatively to, you know, to speak on that, but I don't see why they wouldn't, you know, welcome it. You know, we are trying to make something nice, something affordable, and, you know, obviously, you know, every community needs affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else here that would like to comment on any items from A through E? The hearing is still open.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. My name is Carlos Garza, President of AEC Engineering. I'm here in regards to item B on this agenda, and it's a rezoning request. It is a, if y'all, gentlemen, are familiar, driven the area of Sprague and Raul Longoria, we have the border town market. And under the old UDC code, it really left a gap in regards to the floor area ratio what can be used. And when that originally was done, the development was zoned as neighborhood commercial. That trend has changed everything around us. North and south of us has become more in the general commercial, and we're simply following suit to that so we can finish developing the property because right now, there's a big portion of the property that cannot be developed with the current zoning and the restrictions associated with that. I'm here to answer any questions y'all might have.
Great. Thank you. All right, the hearing is still open. If anyone wishes to comment on any items of A, B, C, D, or E. If there's no other comments, I will close the hearing. At this time, we're gonna take them one by one. Item A.
Motion to approve.
We just need to have it read for the record.
Consider the ordinances providing for the comprehensive plan amendment from outer urban uses to multifamily residential uses and the rezoning request from residential primary district to residential multifamily district as described, located at five twenty-one East Lovett Street, as requested by Gomez Three Construction.
Motion to approve. We have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, discussion, please. I may, on this one, I was able to read it earlier, but I can't open the packet here. Was there any residents against it? I know that the immediate neighbor to the west is single-family. Across the street is single-family, and I know that staff and P and Z denied it. Can you discuss that?
Right. We sent out a total of thirty-eight notifications. We did get back one in writing that they were against it. But nobody showed up to the P and Z in opposition of this request. It was denied by P and Z primarily because of what the mayor talked about earlier, that it's primarily single-family in that area. But nobody showed up in opposition to.
Was that one that was against, was that the immediate neighbor?
Not sure. The letter was included there in the packet.
It was, I remember being confused because I think the resident was also Gomez, right?
Right. Right. Yes.
It's six oh five East Peter.
Can we see where that is?
It's, it's near there. It's on the other side.
Some block on the, on the south of it, so it'd be probably south of the park. It's gotta be one of the, there's only three homes on Peter that got a notice, these three at the very bottom.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, yeah, it's south, yeah.
But there are houses down the street, or lots down the street that are also multifamily?
There are properties northwest that are multifamily properties.
And they're single lots, or are they, that are multi?
There's a, there's a combination, Mayor. Some are, some are single, some are dual lots.
And are those like duplexes, or what kind that exists there right now? This is gonna be, I understand a gentleman mentioned triplex, right?
There's, there's a, there's a triplex at the corner of Van Week and I want to say Fourteenth. And then there's other fourplexes and larger developments as you get closer to Shunier.
All right.
But just to go off of what Jerry was saying, there is multifamily within a few blocks from there.
Within a block.
Okay.
It's a beautiful design. Can you show on the map where that multifamily is?
And are those, I know it's maybe part of y'all being here, Mr. Sevado, but I assume those were rezoned perhaps at some point? And that's, or have they been like that for a long, I mean, this is part of our original townsite, right? So I assume they got rezoned along the way?
Right.
Okay.
Can you see it there? Councilman D S?
The yellow there?
The orange ones are all the multifamily properties within the area.
All the rest are single family?
Whatever is in yellow is single family, correct.
All right, any other questions? If there's not, I'll call for a vote. We have a motion and a second to approve the zoning change. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. It's three to two, so what?
You needed a forfeit vote to overturn the denial of the P and Z on that item because it was a denial. So basically, it fails.
All right, we're gonna move on to item B.
Consider the ordinances providing for the comprehensive plan amendment from neighborhood commercial uses to general commercial uses and the rezoning request from commercial neighborhood district to commercial general district as described, located at eight oh one South Longoria Road, as requested by AEC Engineering LLC.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C.
Consider the ordinances providing for the comprehensive plan amendment from outer urban uses, neighborhood commercial uses, and the rezoning request from residential primary district to commercial neighborhood district as described, located at one twenty-one South Twenty-first Avenue, as requested by Odilia Salinas Serena.
All right, Council.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Go ahead, sir. So on this item, Steph, I guess you were using the old zoning, and P and Z did approve it?
P and Z did approve it, correct. At the time of the, at the, at the time that the request was done, we looked at the future land use map, and it still has this area as residential. However, I will say that just down on the other side of the, of Twenty-first Street, on the east side, there was a property for Starlight that was rezoned commercial. So there are some commercial properties within the area, so that's why.
But that, that one for Starlight, it's a parking lot.
It's a parking lot, correct.
What was the planned use on this? Was this the one that was a medical equipment?
The proposed use for this location is for like a home health, medical type of agency, yes.
But there's other commercial there in that area?
Further south, you have the bakery, Lespie, I believe it's, to the south of this one, so there is.
It's behind one.
And can you, I like that other, like you did on that other case, where you show, can you show the whole zoning?
The zoning layers? Yeah, let me do it.
So the one directly south is?
Lespie on the south side is commercial. It's neighborhood commercial as well.
And that, this is the future zoning?
The future land use. No, this is the current zone.
Can you do future land use?
Yes. It's not coming up.
And ours has the eye, the eye with the crossed out.
Oh, yeah.
Let me see.
I think all of it's, well.
The future land use map is in the packet. It has it as outer urban, which is more in line with residential and multifamily.
And Steph is recommending approval?
We're recommending denial based on the future, on the future.
And P and Z voted for it, or?
P and Z did vote for it. I believe it was a split vote, but it was.
Yeah, it was, I think it was forty-three, I think.
Forty-three, right.
I know we have a discussion, but can I, can I backtrack my vote for approval?
Well, you did your first motion, so if you wish to do that.
You can rescind your motion, or you can call the question?
No.
I'll rescind my, my, my motion.
Okay. Is there any other motions?
Make a motion approve, to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? All right, we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed, too.
Okay, and it's three, two.
Any needs forfeit?
Not on this one.
Okay, all right, so this passes. All right. Item D.
Consider the ordinances providing for the comprehensive plan amendment from outer urban uses to general commercial uses and the rezoning request from residential multifamily district to commercial general district as described, located at two twenty-one East Shunier Street, as requested by Baquero Ventures.
I make a motion to go with Steph and P and Z approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E.
Consider the ordinance providing for this special use permit for on-premise consumption for alcoholic beverages for late hours as described, located at two oh eight East Canton Road, as requested by Memorial Event Center LLC.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Just for the record, we have one abstention.
Right, I was just gonna state for the record that Mayor Protem De Leon has abstained from participation in voting on this item.
All right, moving on to item eight, ordinances. Item A.
Consider ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Edinburgh, Texas at Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter Seventy-two Traffic Schedules, One Speed Limits, amending the speed limit on North Seminary Road from Monte Cristo Road to the northern city of Edinburgh city limit.
All right, Council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Well, motion and a second. Any further discussion? I know, Ms. Fern, you had a question, ma'am, or a comment?
I just had a call, and I just wanted him to explain why, what is the speed limit, what are the lanes, and stuff like that, if you will.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Mardoque, and also City Engineer for the record. This is a request that we had for a resident to analyze the road section. It's a twenty-two-foot. It does not have a curb and gutter. We run the eighty-fifth percentile when it has to do with the speeds. And we're recommending to go from thirty miles an hour to forty miles an hour.
Okay. And that's been assessed and everything?
That's been assessed over a three-day period, and that's kind of what the numbers show.
Been recommended, right?
Yes.
So I just have a question. So is this just based on a request? How often do we evaluate around the city on different speed limits? Is it just based on requests, or?
Both, if we see it, or if there's a request from residents, and we kind of see the trend, then we would analyze it and put our tubes up and see where the eighty-fifth percentile lands.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B.
Consider ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Edinburgh, Texas at Title XI Business Regulations by replacing Chapter One Eighteen Record and Toying Ordnance. Consider ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Edinburgh, Texas at Title Eleven Business Regulations by replacing Chapter One Eighteen Record and Towing Ordinances.
Uh, council?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? I know you had a comment on that one.
Just requesting this one was mine, because I know we had the records come through before, and I talked to Josie. What were the changes? Uh, I understand it was just a few, so could you explain those?
Sure. Um, back in September of twenty twenty-four, we did a complete replacement of Chapter One Eighteen of the Code of Ordinances, which addresses record and towing services in our city. Um, we had some complaints that were brought before council, and those were addressed in that, uh, in that ordinance. And so we brought it back now just to address a few minor changes and tweaks to that ordinance, a few of them being just, in summary, um, the permit fee for application for non-consent toes was reduced to fifteen dollars. We've modified the fee schedule just slightly so that it's in compliance with the occupations code. Um, we have, um, ensured that the insurance requirements are compliant with state law, as well as, um, councils authorizing the chief of police to contract with the record and towing companies that apply and want to participate in our record rotation schedule. So we're still having that record rotation schedule, um, but now it's gonna be by contract. Alright, thank you. Yes.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Is there any further discussion? If not, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, moving on to item nine, variances. Item A?
Consider variance request to the city of Edinburgh Unified Development Code, Article Five, Subdivision Standards, Division Five Point One Hundred, Purpose and Application, Section Five Point One O Two, applicability located at Windsor Road Two, Sartre Longoria Road, as requested by Julio C. Martinez.
So move, second.
We have a motion, uh, and a second. Uh, so, so can you, I don't see a map here, so where, where exactly is this and what, uh?
This is the property just south of the, uh, the burning center. Uh, this is the wetlands for the burning center off of Raúl Longoria.
Okay.
And, um, there's been three properties, or there's been two others just south of this that have gone through the same process. So they, they just wanna build a single-family home, and they're asking for a variance to not to have to go through the subdivision.
So it's a single family. Okay, got it, thank you.
Right.
Alright, um, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, item B?
Consider variance request to Unified Development Code, Article Three, Table Three Point One O Two, Dash One, Single Family Detached Lot and Building Standards, as, as described located at forty-four oh one La Cienega Parkway, as requested by Melvin and Hunt.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion, uh, and a second. Any further discussion?
This, this variance was just, uh, uh, townhouse versus single family, correct? On, on new, on new, on a new construction?
No, this variance was to have a reduced rear setback.
Right.
Uh, they wanted to bring it in from twenty to ten.
Because they're gonna build townhomes.
It's gonna give them more flexibility to build.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does it, does it make a difference with the other houses there?
It's new construction.
Uh, no, because I think it's gonna be, um, there's no houses to the south of it. Um, and currently, there's not gonna be any houses to the north of it, I guess eventually to the north. But if you look at the subdivision that's included in the, in the, uh, packet, um, these are those, uh, those, those tracks with the streets that curve, right? So you don't, you don't necessarily have square lots, they're all curvy. So, um, yeah, I mean, the future development on the north side is gonna have homes that, uh, that, uh, are gonna be abutting to it.
Would that be a problem for the future for those, those houses?
It's not common for, um, for, to have a ten-foot setback. Um, other cities in the valley have a rear ten-foot setback.
Just the kinda development that they're?
Right.
All, all in that area.
So I understand they're gonna do the same thing across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, Ms. Fern, did you have a comment on that? Okay, you did, okay. Alright, um, if there's no other questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, I understand item C was pulled, is that correct?
That is correct.
Alright, so we'll just skip on to item D?
Consider variance request to the city's Unified Development Code, Article Three, Table Three Point One O Two, Dash One, Single Family Detached Lot and Building Standards Lot Area and Rear Yard for the proposed Vias at La Cienega Subdivision, as described located at eighteen ninety-one Burns Boulevard, as requested by Melvin and Hunt.
Alright, council?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item E?
Consider variance request to the city's Unified Development Code, Article Three, Table Three Point One O Two, Dash One, Single Family Detached Lot and Building Standards for the proposed Sunset Grove Subdivision, as described located at forty-eight oh one North Doodle Road, as requested by Real Delta Engineering.
Council?
Go with P and Z and Steph's recommendation to approve?
Alright, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second, second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, I understand item F was pulled also?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to item ten, awarding of bids, item A?
Consider awarding bid number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, New Tires Retread and Flat Repair Services to Southern Tire Mart LLC for new tires, retreads to Southern Tire Mart LLC and flat repair services to Oyer Mides Tire Services LLC based on unit prices.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I, I just had a question on, do we use this also for other tires, or is this just for solid waste, for other departments?
I believe it's for all the departments.
Oh, it is for all the departments?
I believe so.
Evening, Mayor, Ramiro Vamos, Director of Solid Waste. Uh, actually, most of the departments are starting to do their, their own. Uh, the only ones that we're taking care of right now is fire, ourselves, and some of the non-conforming tires for agriculture.
Okay, so you've always done for all, so now everybody's doing their own thing, or is that?
I guess they're, they're beginning to, depending on the needs.
Can we look to centralize them, maybe? Cause that, we'll probably get, we can get better pricing, I mean?
Well, most, most of the stuff that we're getting is actually cooperative pricing now, so then everybody's just doing the same thing, just going out for cooperative pricing.
But it's just being managed individually by each department, I guess?
Hmm.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item B?
Consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a sixty-month lease agreement between the city of Edinburgh and D and M Leasing Company through the Texas Local Government Purchasing Cooperative Buyboard Contract Number Seven Forty-four Dash Twenty-four for the procurement of approximately nine patrol units at two thousand seventy-three and fifteen cents per unit, and one drone unit at two thousand one seventy-eighty-three cents per unit per month.
Motion to approve, second.
Alright, we have a motion, uh, and a second to approve. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand?
That one I had signed up for.
Okay, I didn't, I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, ma'am.
I just asked them, I had just asked, cause I had two men call and ask about it, so I asked the chief if he would just kind of explain what it is.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you.
No problem.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Hi, Mayala, Police Department, Police Chief. I, uh, starting out, so you all approved a master lease agreement with D and M. Uh, months ago, we acquired our first fleet of patrol units, uh, that just went, went active on the road here recently. Uh, and this is the second wave under that same master lease agreement. Uh, and I, I think Ms. McCleary wanted me to explain how, how the lease works. So we, we ordered the number of vehicles from the leasing company. We give them the specs to outfit it, they buy all the equipment. It gets outfitted by a third-party outfitter, and it comes into service with us under, under our T M L and whatnot. We pay a monthly rate, which is here in, in the, uh, in the agenda item. Uh, and after we hit, get close to a hundred thousand miles, the idea is to turn that vehicle in and put a new leased vehicle on the road. All of the equipment on that vehicle belongs to us, so we can repurpose that into the new car if we don't need to replace it, which ultimately will lower the, the lease rate, is what we, we hope to do. Uh, also, when they sell the vehicle, the equity minus their fee comes back to us that we can repurpose it into that next lease agreement.
Yeah, okay. Great. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. How many more, uh, vehicles will be needed that have reached that threshold? I mean, cause you only have a master lease for certain amount of vehicles, right, so?
Well, th- this, we have twelve in the, in the last order, we're gonna get ten in this order, and it's broken out nine patrol units, and one that is a patrol unit, but it's drone outfitted, so the cargo back of the vehicle will have compartments for the different drone, uh, fleet that we have, so that we can deploy it a lot easier in the field. Uh, that, that brings us to twenty-two.
Right.
Uh, and we still have, uh, some other high-mileage patrol units that we'll be working on in the next budget year to try to get them replaced.
How many are those? I'm just trying to put the council's.
We had a total, we had a total in our fleet of about forty-eight. I'd have to go back and look at my fleet report.
You can let, you can let.
To see exactly where those other high-miles are, but, yeah.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Alright, and, uh, City Attorney, we already took the vote, right? Just wanna make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, we're gonna move on, uh, and now to item eleven, resolutions. Item A?
Consider the resolution denying the in- increased rate proposal by Texas Gas Service Company, a division of one gas, Rio Grande Valley service area.
Council?
Motion to deny.
Alright, uh, we have a motion to deny the, uh, item or, or, or a green with the recommended deny? Okay, I just wanna clarify, yeah.
We, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, a motion to go with Steph's recommendation.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Alright, and, and I just had a question for our City Attorney, so does that mean we're gonna be fighting this in behalf of our residents, or?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So basically, Texas Gas Service has proposed, uh, consistent rate increases, and there's a coalition of cities, uh, including some here in the Rio Grande, uh, Valley area that are challenging those increases. And so, um, by virtue of this resolution, we are letting them know that we are not in favor of those rate increases that they're trying to impose across the board.
And, and didn't we, uh, finalize, uh, a rate, you know, past rate increase, uh, maybe a couple of years ago, or?
Well, we have been, um, challenging them along the way, but they just keep submitting them. Um, we, we did, yeah, we did get word that, uh, the coalition is working on trying to come to a resolution with the, uh, the gas company, but we do need this resolution in place in order to establish our position, yes.
Good. Alright, thank you. Uh, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we have consent, agenda, uh, council, item twelve, we have items A through G. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, approve all of them, or is there any one we don't take out of consent?
Make a motion to approve A through G.
We have a motion. Is there, we have a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item thirteen, other business? Any other future items, agenda items, council? Uh, just maybe use this as an opportunity to state, we do have a, a meeting next week, correct, for canvassing? That we'll have to order the election, correct?
Yes, sir. I believe it's scheduled for November the twelfth.
Can you just give the date and the time?
It'll be Wednesday, November twelfth at six P M, and it'll be here at the City Council Chambers.
Okay. Alright, uh, that being the case, uh, do we have a motion to go into executive session, item fourteen?
So move.
We have a motion?
Second, again.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're now going into executive session.
Item A, consultation with city attorney. Item B, consultation with city attorney, possible action regarding PFAS litigation. Item C, consultation with city attorney, possible action regarding, in REAP. Item D, discussion of possible action regarding economic development agreements, one, Project Twenty-Five, two, Project One Hundred, three, Project Boot, four, Project Choo-Choo, five, Project Revival, six, Project Sprinkler, seven, Office Space, eight, Workforce Resource Center. Item E, discussion of possible action regarding economic development agreements, consideration of amendment to agreement with E D C.
All right, we're now back from executive session. It is 8:17 PM. Can I get a motion to recome in?
Move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Just want the record to reflect that there's no action taken in executive session. I believe there's some items that do need action.
Yes, Mayor. Under item 14B, recommend a motion authorizing city manager and city attorney to submit a claim on behalf of the City of Edinburgh.
So move. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next.
On item 14C, recommend a motion authorizing city management and city attorney to proceed with city's participation in the coalition regarding AEP's rate adjustment claim.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
On item 14D, recommend approval and ratification of the following projects. And on this one, it's going to be item 14D3, Project Boot, item 14D5, Project Revival, and 14D6, Project Sprinkler.
So move. Second.
Well, motion and second. I assume as discussed in executive session?
That's correct, Mayor.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
And finally, on item 14E, recommend a motion authorizing the approval of an agreement with the EDC on the terms and conditions as discussed in executive session.
Motion approved. Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Any other items?
No further action items are needed at this time.
All right, do we have motion adjourned?
So move.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're now adjourned.